Order at 7:01 and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Too many people for one microphone, I think.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Then I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Peepo. Are there any? Can we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Public comment. Are there any? Is there anybody here that is here to speak on anything other than the public hearings that we will be having later on? All right, thank you. Then moving on to announcements.
We have no announcements tonight.
Thank you very much. Then moving on, we have the approval of the minutes. I will take a motion if there is no changes that need to happen to the minutes. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so.
I haven't seen any. I approve.
Okay.
You want to make a motion or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Minutes were approved from February 27, 2024. First, we will move on to the first of our public hearings. We have Parkway Meadows, August Ventures LLC, and Winkler Land Co., LLC are the applicants.
Yes, Planner Kozatik is going to be handling this presentation for tonight's meeting.
Sorry about that, folks.
Technology is wonderful when it works.
When it works. All right, yeah, you can go to the next slide if you want to introduce the topic. Background on the property, it's just under 34 gross acres. A concept plan was reviewed for the property by the Planning Commission and the City Council in 2022. City received an application recently to rezone the property to PUD, or Planned Unit Development. The city also received an application for preliminary plat approval on 86 lots and four outlots for Parkway Meadows, in addition to a comprehensive plan amendment. Next slide, please. Neighborhood conditions, to the south of the proposed development is vacant land guided toward town center and City Hall south of that. To the east is large rural lot residential properties, including two properties that are approximately 10 acres in size, single-family detached homes, and then another property that's vacant right now, that is approximately 35 acres in size. To the north of the proposed development is more ag-related land, two properties with single, or one property with a single-family home and an active farm north of that. And to the west is low-density residential development, Whispering Creek North Development, and a city-owned parcel which contains some infrastructure and a city park. Get this on my screen here, okay. The land is currently guided to low-density residential north of James Parkway and medium-density residential south of James Parkway. The low-density residential zone is home to R1 and R2 zoning within the city, which is 2 and 1/2 to 5 units per net acre. Medium density would be R3 zoning, which has a variety of detached and detached residential housing options. The density for that is 5 to 10 units per net acre. The proposed development is 3.3 units per net acre, not meeting the density requirements for medium density, which is why the developer has proposed a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the property to low-density residential. And then residential detached, single-family homes also meet the intent of the guided land use for the comp plan. Go next slide, sorry. 33.31 acres is currently zoned urban reserve, .68 is zoned, uh, single-family residential. The entire property must be rezoned to zoning district consistent with the purpose and intent of the comp plan. PUD zoning is proposed for the entire project, as mentioned previously. Next slide, the intent of PUD zoning. Several different intents, really what we're going for here is C, provide variations to the strict application of land use regulations in order to improve site design and operation while at the same time incorporating design elements which exceed the city's standards to offset the effect of any variations granted, and also preserve and enhance natural features and open spaces. Next slide, please. I got it. The PUD proposed is going to allow for a reduction in lot size, lot width, setback requirements, and various design standards within the development, in exchange the developers proposing to exceed public land dedication by .36 acres. Some examples that have been used in the past for PUD approvals in the city are incorporation of a golf course, increased housing design standards, park dedication exceeding minimum requirements, such as in this case, landscaping over and above minimum requirements, construction of paths or trails, and construction of off-site infrastructure. Here's a current zoning map, the property is in the red square, and then the proposed PUD with the design layout is also attached there. Section 11-3-8 of the zoning code identifies criteria to be considered part of the rezoning. The proposed action has been considered in relation to the specific policies and provisions of and found consistent with the city comprehensive plan. The proposed use is or will be compatible with present and future land uses of the area. The proposed use also conforms with all performance standards contained within this title. The proposed use can be accommodated with existing public services and will not overburden the city's service capacity and traffic generation by the proposed development is within capabilities of the streets serving the property. So here's a comparison of the R1, which is the straight, single-family zoning district here in the city, and their standards, and then the requested standards for Parkway Meadows the developer has requested. Reduction of minimum lot size, minimum lot width, setbacks, and then the block length. The maximum block length currently is 1,200 feet. There is a block on this development that's just over that and 1,232 feet in length. They're proposing that due to some physical limitations to the north of the property that prevent an additional street connection. Sidewalks are required on both sides of the minor collector streets, and only one sidewalk is being proposed on the east side of Riley Road, south of James Parkway. And then they're looking for deviation from street standards by not extending Riley Road proposed to the south of the subdivision, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. For one and two family residents, just a reminder, a 440-square-foot attached garage shall be constructed at the time of the house, and for all newly created lots, all site plans for single-family homes shall provide for the location of a three-stall attached garage, whether or not construction is intended. Get into tree preservation requirements. The city requires that 40% of significant trees must be preserved. Significant trees are defined as below for hardwood deciduous, it's six inches or greater in diameter, softwood deciduous 12 inches or greater, coniferous is 12 feet in height or greater. The developer is proposing to exceed the allowable tree remover by 249 caliper inches. So the tree replacement plan, the developer is proposing to plant 100 trees to meet the tree replacement obligation, 17 deciduous trees, 83 coniferous trees. The replacement plan does meet city code requirements. The developers' tree replacement obligations are shown here on the plan. The tree is depicted on that map. In addition to the developers' tree replacement obligations, the builder is required to plant two trees upon each lot at time of building permit, along with sod. It's cut off a little bit there, but this plan illustrates that two-tree per lot requirement that's required upon the builder. Next slide. Easements have been depicted as required by city code. In addition, three temporary cul-de-sacs are proposed within the temporary roadway easements. Staff notes that two retaining walls are depicted within these easements on the northwest corner of the plat. The proposed retaining wall should be moved outside of this easement or be removed from the plans entirely. Sanitary sewer is available on the west side of the property along James Parkway via eight-inch PVC gravity pipe. Additional service is on the west side along Riley Road via eight-inch PVC gravity. Plans submitted are consistent with the city's 2040 sanitary sewer plan, except that sanitary sewer must be extended within Riley Road to the north of the property line. Staff suggests inclusion of sanitary sewer stubs in Riley Road, south of James Parkway, to provide service to properties in the future. And ultimately, the sewer plan requires city engineer approval right off. Water is also available to the west side of the property along James Parkway, 12-inch ductile iron water main, and at the northerly end of Riley Road. The plans submitted are consistent with the city's 2040 water plan and show 12-inch trunk water main running east-west within James Parkway and eight-inch water main to serve the remaining development. Staff also suggests stubs in Riley Road, south of James Parkway, to provide service for properties in the future. A city well is located at the southwest corner of James Parkway and Riley Road in that park. The well is currently considered an emergency well and is not connected to the city's water treatment plant. The engineer, city's engineer, has requested the inclusion of an additional 12-inch potable trunk water main running to and through the proposed development. The requested water main is depicted on the plan set and will eventually be used by the city to carry that raw water from the existing well to the city's treatment plant. The city will reimburse the developer 100% of the cost for the oversizing of that water line. The water plan will also need to be approved and signed off by the city engineer. The property lies entirely within the Vermillion River watershed district and is divided into several different subwatersheds. The stormwater plan must also be approved by the city engineer. The plan shows four separate stormwater basins proposed to serve the development, and all basins are located on outlots proposed to be dedicated to the city upon final plat. 10-foot-wide vegetative buffer is also required from the high-water line around all stormwater ponds. Basin 301's pond, as depicted, the buffer must be expanded currently. Wetland delineation has been completed in concurrence with the delineated wetland boundaries that were approved by the city in January of 2021. Two wetlands that were identified on the property that must be protected in accordance with the Wetland Conservation Act, Clean Water Act, and city code. Required buffer for these two wetlands within the development averaged 25 feet with a minimum of 16 feet. Buffer sign markers are required along all lot lines at the buffer locations, and there are no FEMA-designated flood planes or DNR-protected waters or wetlands on the property. This is just the plan depicting those wetlands and the buffer surrounding them. The proposed development borders on two existing public streets, James Parkway and Riley Road. Both streets are located to the west of the subject property. The city's transportation plan depicts a future road running east-west through the subject property, and a street extending south, which is Riley Road, along the west side of the property, and a street running north-south along the east side of the property. All three streets are identified as minor collectors in the city's 2040 transportation plan. Minor collector streets, here's a typical section, it's 16 feet per lane, 10 feet right-of-way on each side of that, and then there's five-foot sidewalks on both sides. Go to the next slide. James Parkway, as we said, functions as a minor collector street. The segment located east of Dakota Avenue was constructed between 2000 and 2002, and west of Dakota Avenue was constructed in 2005. These serve as the primary access to Eagleview Elementary School to the west of Dakota Avenue. 2019 traffic volumes for James Parkway located east of Dakota were approximately 700 trips per day. Plans submitted show easterly extension of James Parkway through the subject property with 80-foot right-of-way and 32-foot wide street with sidewalks on both sides, which meet the city's standards. Note that James Parkway will get narrower through the proposed development than in the existing development to the west, and this is due to changing standards over time. Two local street connections to James Parkway are proposed, Streets A and C depicted on the plans. The plans submitted do show a southerly extension of Riley Road approximately 100 feet south of the current germinai. The plan shows a 35, or 34-foot wide road within an 80-foot right-of-way with a sidewalk on the east side. Proposed development meets the standards for minor collector streets within the city, with the exception of the sidewalk on the west side of the Riley Road. Staff recommend that Riley Road, south of James Parkway, be constructed to the southern boundary of the plat pursuant to city code section 12-9-5-1, which states, "The arrangement of streets in a new subdivision shall make provisions for the proper projection of streets into adjoining areas by carrying the new streets to the boundaries of the new subdivision at appropriate locations approved by the city engineer." The plans submitted do not depict a north-south minor collector street on the east side of the property, as identified in the city's transportation plan, as circled here on the graphic. Staff recommend that this road could be constructed further to the east and constructed entirely with the property to the east when, and if that develops. The Planning Commission and City Council supported this concept during the review of the concept plan in 2022. Local streets serve as access to properties. They must be a minimum of 28 feet in width, with B618 curbing within a 60-foot right-of-way. Sidewalks are required on one side of all local roads. The plans submitted meet minimum design standards for local roads. Here's a typical section, 14-foot lanes instead of 16, sidewalks still five feet, just one instead of two, and then you have that right-of-way as well. A shortened northerly extension approximately 117 feet of Riley Road is proposed within a 60-foot right-of-way. This section of Riley would be considered a local roadway, and as depicted, the northerly extension meets city code requirements. Additional high-level comments regarding streets are as follows. Future road extension signs are required where streets dead-end. City code requires temporary cul-de-sacs to be constructed where dead-end streets exceed 150 feet in length. Streets A, B, and C all exceed 150 feet in length, and temporary cul-de-sacs were proposed on the plans. Temporary cul-de-sac should be orientated that they only impact one lot, and that it be constructed with curb and gutter. The preferred rotation must be away from the side of the street with the sidewalk, and the cul-de-sac can be reduced in size from the permanent cul-de-sac dimensions with final configuration subject to city engineer and public works approval. All Boulevard should be sodded by the developer per city code, and concrete driveway apron shall be constructed from the back of the curb to the property line per city code. Here's the proposed site plan with the street layout and an example of a temporary cul-de-sac. Let me get to traffic. Ingress, egress from the proposed development will be confined to the existing segment of James Parkway until further street connections are provided to the east, to either County Road 91, and south to County Road 2. From James Parkway, traffic will likely be distributed to County Road 2 via Todd Street and Dakota Avenue. 2019 traffic volumes for James Parkway located west of the development were approximately 700 vehicles per day. The proposed single-family detached housing development is anticipated to generate 878 total daily trips to the roadway network, with 65 trips in the AM peak hour and 86 trips in the PM peak hour. The table below demonstrates how these trips could be expected and distributed throughout the day. Residents of the existing Whispering Creek neighborhood located to the west may have concerns regarding additional traffic on James Parkway. From an engineering perspective, the existing road does have the capacity to handle the additional traffic, and it is noted that any such increase in traffic will be temporary until future road connections are made via other routes. Concerns may also be expressed regarding impacts to Todd Street and County Road 2 intersection or the Dakota Avenue, County Road 2 intersection. Staff has no knowledge of major operational issues at these existing intersections, which are causing unacceptable levels of service. And I'm not a traffic engineer, but Rich, I don't know if you'd want to kind of go in more depth on levels of service?
That says it.
Okay.
Specific questions, we'll take them up.
Okay. The city's traffic engineers have reviewed the proposed development, along with the existing traffic volumes on James Parkway and Todd Street and Dakota Avenue. It's their opinion that the additional traffic as a result of the proposed development will not affect James Parkway, or the Todd Street, County Road 2 intersection, or the Dakota Avenue, County Road 2 intersection beyond the capabilities of those streets and intersections, or reduce the traffic operations to any unacceptable levels of service. They have also opined that the amount of traffic generated from the development is unlikely to trigger warrants for signalization or otherwise improved intersection traffic control on County Road 2, and based on this consultation with the city's traffic engineer, staff are not recommending the completion of a traffic impact study at this time for the proposed development. The city subdivision ordinance requires that concrete sidewalks are constructed on at least one side of all local roads and both sides of minor collector streets. It also requires that sidewalks be constructed on both sides of all minor collector streets. The city's park and trail plan identifies proposed sidewalks running east and west, east through west through the property, and north and south along the far eastern boundary of the proposed development. The north-south trail along the western edge of the proposed, the, I'm sorry, that was just worded wrong. Sidewalk trail requirements for development based on city code requirements, five-foot sidewalk adjacent to all local streets, five-foot sidewalks on both sides of minor, okay, let's get past that. So the first picture here in the top left is the adopted city park search area within the comp plan. There is a neighborhood park search area identified northeast of the property. And then Park Service area map is shown directly below that. It's showing that the entire property is currently serviced by that Whispering Creek Park, which is a mini-park located right in the southern, western corner of the property. It's also served by Wagner Park, which is a neighborhood park which serves a mile radius. This plan on the right-hand side is, was approved in 2008 by the city, and it's the public facilities master plan. It's a very high-level plan, basically that contains part of this property in the north of City Hall section of this drawing here. We'll get into park, or public land dedication here shortly, but this is kind of, will help explain what the city is asking from the developer for. We can come back to this. Maximum length of all blocks shall be 1,200 feet, minimum length shall be 600 feet. Blocks that are over 900 feet in length require pedestrian ways at least 20 feet wide. The use of additional pedestrian ways to schools, parks, or other destinations may be required. The northerly block exceeds this requirement stated before. The minimum lot area shall consist of buildable land exclusive of wetlands, utility transmission easements, and pipeline easements that encumber lot development. The developer is requesting that the northerly most block be allowed to exceed that limit in length due to the landforms to the north, steep slopes and wetlands which prevent that road connection. The city requires 8% of the land be dedicated for parks, playgrounds, or public open spaces. The developer shall make a cash contribution to the city's park and trail fund roughly related to anticipated effect of the plat on the park and trail system, so the city can request either 8% of that land be dedicated as land for parks, or 8% of the cash value for the land be dedicated in the parks fund for future parks. The plat contains 33.09 net acres. Land dedication required for the plat would be 2.65 acres. If no land dedication was required, the park fee of 8% of the fair market land value would take effect. Whispering Creek Park already serves the area, as we already mentioned, as well as Wagner Park. Go to the next slide. It's just a street view of Whispering Creek Park in the city's wellhouse. Go to the next slide. So here's what the developer is proposing. It's 3.01 acres, which exceeds their required amount of land dedication. This land dedication would be used by the city eventually to help create that municipal master plan, so it could be, you know, the location where the new fire hall is going to go, it could be the location where the new police department, library, city hall, park, playground, it's up in there at this point, but the city is just trying to secure that area for that future plan. Additional comments, the city engineer reviewed the memo, reviewed in April 15th. Public Works, they support the temporary cul-de-sac and inclusion of the raw water line to the eastern edge of the plat. Public Works also mentioned they'll need access to all ponding areas for maintenance purposes. The police chief has reviewed the plans and saw no public safety concern in regards to neighborhood layout. Fire department had no concerns, building official had no comment, city attorney had no comment. School district impact, an average of .55 students per household. Times the 86 houses equals about 47 students, which can be anticipated to be added to the new Prague school district. That study has not been updated recently, so those numbers aren't 100% accurate. The proposed plat contains a remnant strip on the west side of Riley Road, proposes outlaw D. Subdivision ordinance prohibits the creation of such strips which may control access to streets from adjacent properties, except under the conditions approved by City Council. Staff notes that the adjacent property owner to the west, Winkler Land Company, LLC, is also a party to the current application, and staff recommends that proposed outlaw D shall either be conveyed to the adjacent property owner, Winkler Land Company, or dedicated to the city as part of Riley Road right-of-way. So we'll finally get into the staff's recommendations for the action items here tonight. Staff does recommend approval of the request to amend the city's 2040 comprehensive plan to re-guide approximately 17 acres from medium-density residential to low-density residential for the following reason. Proposed re-guidance is, will not have a serious or negative effect on the overall planned land uses within the 2040 growth area, and will help achieve housing goals contained within the comp plan. On the rezoning, staff recommends approval of the request to rezone 33.31 acres from urban reserve to planned unit development, and the request to rezone .68 acres from R1 suburban, single-family residential to PUD planned unit development for the following reasons. It's consistent with the city's comp plan, which guides the property to low-density residential. The property, the proposed use of the property for single-family residential is compatible with present and future uses of the area. The proposed use of the property complies with the performance standards contained in the city's zoning and subdivision ordinance, except as specifically identified in the PUD ordinance for the Parkway Meadows development. The proposed residential use of the property can be accommodated with existing public services. Traffic generation by the proposed development is also within capabilities of existing streets and intersections serving the property. And noting that Parkway Meadows will be subject to the R1 suburban, single-family residential district, except as depicted on this graph to the right, which shows those difference in standards. The plat, and this is what the developer has requested at this point, the plat shall be developed in accordance with the following plans, subject to the conditions contained in the in the April 30th, 2024 Planning Commission report. Conditions noted on the red line plan stated April 30th, 2024 and subject to the recommendation of the city engineer. PUD must be maintained and comply with the following conditions. First, Riley Road shall be constructed to the southerly property line of the plat. Outlots A and B containing wetlands and stormwater ponds shall be dedicated to the city upon a final plat. Outlot D shall be conveyed to the adjacent property owner or incorporated into the Riley Road right away. Outlot C containing 4.2 gross acres shall be dedicated to the city. Or outlot C containing 4.78 acres shall be dedicated to the city. And this would incorporate proposed lots 55, 56, and 57. So those are our kind of two options regarding outlot C that we'll be seeking some feedback On the preliminary plat, staff recommend approval of the request for preliminary plat Parkway Meadows containing 86 single-family residential lots and four outlots on 33.99 gross acres for the following reasons. The development of the property for single-family residential homes is consistent with the city's comp plan. The proposed plat is consistent with the purpose and intent of the city's comp plan and standards contained with the city zoning and subdivision ordinances. Development of the property, single-family residential is compatible with the adjacent land uses. Conditions that the city is recommending to impose on the preliminary plat are as follows. Developer must enter into developer's agreement with the city at the time of final plat approval. Preliminary plat is issued for a period of one year and shall become null and void without further action unless the final plat is filed within one year of the dated city council granting preliminary plat approval. Preliminary plat approval is granted in accordance with Parkway Meadows preliminary plat plans submitted to the city. Preliminary plat approval subject to conditions contained within the Planning Commission report. The plan shall be amended to depict the required 10-foot wide vegetative buffer from the high water line of all stormwater ponds and show that stormwater ponds and buffers and outlots will be dedicated to the city. Sanitary sewer shall be extended to the north end of Riley Road. Future road extension signs must be placed on dead-end streets of A, B, and C Riley Road and James Parkway. Wetland buffer signs are required along all lines at wetland buffer locations. Proposed outlot D must be conveyed to the adjacent property owner or incorporated into Riley Road right away. Concrete driveway apron shall be constructed from the curb to the property line. Boulevards shall be sodded by developer. Riley Road shall be constructed to the southern property line of the plat and proposed lots 55, 56, and 57 shall be incorporated into the proposed park land dedication. The last two are highlighted because those are items we're seeking feedback from the Planning Commission on tonight. Also noting that the preliminary plat contains 86 lots on 26.03 net acres, which meets 3.3 units per net acre, which meets the density identified in the city's comp plan. The Parks Commission has recommended approval of the public land dedication for Parkway Meadows instead of cash and loo. A public hearing is required for these items. Notices were mailed to property owners within 350 feet, which is why I'm sure a lot of you are here tonight. Notices were published in the newspaper, on the city's website, and social media. Staff encouraged the public to submit comments prior to the meeting. So in a second here, staff will open the public hearing. Anyone participating via Zoom who wishes to address the commission, please raise your hand on Zoom if you're unaware of how to do that. It's...
Let's see. It's a chat.
It's the React button on your Zoom on the bottom and just raise your hand if you would like to speak. Once unmuted, please state your name and address for the record prior to addressing the commission. And once you have finished addressing the commission, you will again be muted. When all questions and comments have been received, the public hearing will then be closed for planning commission action. So I think we can start the public hearing.
Just note that we'll take comments for the public hearing from in-person participants first. And following all in-person comments, we will turn to the Zoom participants. Anyone wishing to address the commission, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is opened at 7:36 PM.
Hello. Steve Nightingale. I live at 502 Riley Road, directly across the street from the park and the proposed development. I don't really have any questions. I'm all for developing the city and increasing the population here and the businesses and everything. I think it's great. I've been here since 2008. My only concern, I guess, that I wanted to address was that this development is landlocked, at least for 15 more years or when the next thing happens. But we currently have four dead-end roads with, give or take, 119 residents from Todd Street to the east. And now we're adding 86 more families and vehicles driving, only one way out. I just wish that this development included another exit. I know the roads and everything can handle it. I'm also concerned about the park across the street from me. It's a little kids' park. There's a lot of kids that play there every day. They have to cross the street to get on the sidewalk on my side and adding all that traffic coming through, maybe there's some alternative that could happen to make it safe for all the kids to get in and out of the park. That's my only concern. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Please feel free to come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Reenie Benson. I live at 25678 Natchez Avenue, which is directly to the east of this proposal. And I have some concerns about the density of it. We have horses and I have, children are just drawn to them. I don't think that we should have the requirement to worry too much about them. Can a fence or other larger buffer be put between our properties, property, my property and the property directly to the north of me? So we don't have a lot of trespassy, I guess is the word I want to use? Yes?
I'm just, I'm nodding that I agree.
Okay, okay. I'm also concerned how the topography of this land is going to be changed. This is really a low area all the way around his, and to the west of your property. It's very low and we flood out even with the rain that we have now. You know, we'll get a little pond that'll stand for a while. And I'm concerned that you don't put in adequate enough piping so we don't have runoff come directly into our property. We come down the hill of that property that's right on the corner there of 91 and 2. That is a large hill going down towards my property. And that drains from that hill and all of that side there down through the back corner of my property and then into that area. Now, if there's not, if that gets higher or lower and there's more water coming in, because we know the ground itself takes care of a lot of rainwater. You get concrete and houses and expect the sewer drains to drain all of that off and we have a substantial storm, we're going to be flooded out again. And I'm very concerned about that as well. So those are my two main concerns. I don't, I bought the property out here because I didn't think it was going to be so developed so fast. And now you guys are basically pushing me and my next-door neighbor to the north out. And I really take objection to that, too. That's all I have to say.
Is there anybody present here that would like to also speak?
Members of the commission, my name is Dale Runkel. I'm a real estate planning consultant for the Barstness. Warren passed away, as you know, not that long ago and the one request he had for me was to just look after his property. I think I had one question on the plan. The outlot that was redhashed, what is that?
Is that outlet D?
Is that C?
Let me see if I can... On Riley Road? Was it this little one?
It's the public land dedication.
Oh, yep. Yep.
What is that?
The public land dedication.
Just a public...
Okay. And was there an access? Where's that access or?
So there will be an access here. I don't know what it's, it might just be grass or I don't think there's any plans yet for, but there's a little spot here you can get off that temporary cul-de-sac. And then on Riley Road, you should be able to access that as well.
Anyway, the one before Warren passed, I think he met with Mr. Sullivan and had requested that he has the property directly to the south. And he talked about, he always thought that we would split a road or, and that would be developed and run a parallel road east-west along the, our north property, his south property. I think Mr. Sullivan said he looked at it, but then Warren passed and he went back to the old design. I think the way that we look at this development with the two stub streets that come to the south is not going to work for the development to the south of what we're looking at to do. And I would think, I would request that we would relook at that east-west road going across the southern boundary of that property. I had a very interesting meeting this afternoon with a reputable developer looking at the south property, looking at more of a town center concept. And I don't want to reveal the name at this point, but it is, it was a good meeting. And I think we're going to take the next steps to see what we can do to make something happen. So that is in the works and that would then provide possibly another access down to County Road 2 along our most easterly boundary and splitting with Jay's property and coming up. And we're both, you know, if that, if they develop first, I mean, we'll give the easements and work with that. But right now, I think we could be, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but we're in the very beginning processes of trying to put, put the deal together. It was the best meeting I've had in a long time and trying to, you know, tie a piece of property together. And that's all I can reveal at this point. But that would be our request to continue that item to relook at that east-west street and we would be willing to grant our side of the easement and work with that street, so.
Thank you.
Before you sit down, when do you think you, excuse me, Mr. Vogel? Question for you. When do you think that you would be able to have your plans with this developer? With this new developer that you had just recently met with, when do you think you would have your plans in order to piece both properties together?
It would be, yeah, I mean, we would be looking at running the north-south street up the boundary and we'd be looking at that south property, street to be working the internal of our development. So, you know, we would be looking at some kind of a buffer between the single-family development and then moving into more of the town center concept. And right now, it's just, it's preliminary, but it's very good, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, you want to put up the other one that showed more of that land? The one that shows the town...
Oh, that's in, yeah.
Like the comp plan?
No, the 2008 municipal campus.
One of your first slides you're going to show. Your slideshow. I think it shows the land he's talking about so people understand where it is.
Oh, yeah, the very first slide.
Okay, just one minute. Actually, I'm going to just share the county's GIS.
Yeah, that's a better deal.
That's probably easier.
Okay. For the Planning Commission's reference, I have shared on my screen the property highlighted in red that Mr. Runkel is representing. It has been long known as the Barstness property. It was owned by, I think it's still entitled to Barstness Construction and Excavating. So this proposed plat, preliminary plat butts into or is connected to the Barstness property. There are two planned local street connections that come into the property, approximately where my mouse is shown. Do you have any other questions about this particular comments? Okay. Is any... Go ahead.
Is there anybody else present that would like to comment?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Joe Sullivan. I am the applicant and appreciate your time and consideration tonight. Special thanks to Jake and Renee for their help in getting us here and to Rich. It's been an enjoyable process. It's hard to believe it was two years ago already, nearly, that we're here in front of you presenting the concept plan, which at that time was extremely well-received, which we appreciate. The reason, and we talked about it back then, and tonight again, the reason we have the PUD process is we're trying to bridge two different underlying residential zonings. We've got the low-density housing, which allows for 85-foot lots, and the R3 or medium-density housing that allows for 60-foot lots. And we've tried to balance that with predominantly 65-foot lots. And what we're trying to attract, our goal is to attract, families and new residents to Elko New Market. And hopefully this is their first purchase in Elko New Market to establish themselves and their families as residents. Maybe not their last purchase in Elko New Market, but hopefully their first. And so I think with the layout that we presented and the lots having the dimensions they do, I think we can create a community there that is achievable and appealing to that audience. And I think that's important. I'm here with my associate, Rick Janson, and also Nick Polta of Pioneer Engineering. And so we're certainly available to try to address any questions or issues that you have. I know there are a couple of things that we need to address. And to Dale's point, you know, that is something we considered and we would consider it again, but circumstances, I guess, didn't allow us to do that right now. Anyway, if there's questions, we're happy to address them.
Madam Chair and the rest of the planning committee, thanks. This is Tim Swaber. I live in the north agricultural part of the proposed development and just have a couple of concerns about where stormwater will be routed. It wasn't super clear to me where that will be routed out of the prod, out of the proposed development and how it will get, most likely across my land, since I think most of that stuff drains that way unless you're taking it a different direction, I don't know about. And also, same as my neighbor, concerns about fencing for trespassing or just to, in general, how, how the border will be dealt with between our property and this development. Because now I will have a lot of neighbors. I don't intend on talking to each and every one of them about a fence.
Are there any other comments? I don't see any on Zoom, so with that, one more time, are there any more comments before we close the public hearing?
Hi, my name's Amy Cars and I live on 255 Park. And Wayne was my dad and Warren was my uncle. And Dale's been working with them for years, trying to get that organized and help them with the process and... And Dale's been working with them for years, trying to get that organized and help them with the process and. It's kind of unfortunate that it's happening like right now after they're gone and we are kind of not stuck with but figuring all of this out. So it would be nice to figure it, like have some time to decide what we think should happen and what we should do because it's all new to us. Uncle Warren took care of a lot of that stuff, so. We appreciate Dale helping us and kind of guiding us through what he thinks we should do. So we're just asking for maybe a little bit more time or some consideration for what we would need for that property. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll ask again, are there any more comments before we close the public hearing on this item? And again, second time, any more comments on this item before the public hearing is closed? Okay, with that, the public hearing is closed at seven fifty-two.
These, both the city engineer and the design engineer are here tonight and could potentially address the concern or the questions about what will be happening with the stormwater and what, how it will discharge from the property, how it discharges today versus how it will discharge upon development. We can bring up some drawings for you if you wish.
No, I'll just talk. Our, our code, not only our code, but it's also been deemed equivalent to both Vermillion River Watershed and Scott County Watershed Management Organizations. So we do the reviews on behalf of those agencies as well as our own. And our code is set up to require developers to basically, to the extent reasonably practical, maintain existing drainage patterns, not increase runoff rates, which is how, how much water is flowing at any given time, not increase runoff volume, which is the overall amount of water going off the site in any location, and to maintain the quality of the water similar to or better than what it is today. So every developer has to lay out his plans. He has to look at where's the water going today, how much, how fast, and how dirty. And then put in facilities to not divert water all from, you know, if it's distributed, they can't run it all at one point. They have to maintain that distribution. But they also have to put in facilities that slow down the rate so that it doesn't wash out things and slow, retain the volume so that we're getting as much into the ground as reasonably we can as what happened before. And then use wet ponds to remove sediment, which typically has nutrients attached to it. So that gets removed in the ponds and then cleaned out periodically by the city. And in my opinion, after reviewing the latest set of plans, I think these satisfactorily do that. In fact, I think one of my comments even was that the ponds appear to be larger than necessary, so. Hopefully that addresses in a general way. So I would expect that no neighbor should see more water certainly, or really much difference from before and after.
Thank you.
Can we get any? If it doesn't work? Is there any repercussions if it doesn't work, but you think it'll be?
Ma'am, the public hearing is closed. Are, if the chair wishes to reopen the public hearing?
Just a question.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess as far as technicalities, because again, when we have developers come in and say that they're going to do this, that, and that, what are the conditions or protections we have as a city?
So we do a few things. We provide inspectors during the work on behalf of the city to observe that the compliance and specs are complied with. We require as-built record drawings of the utilities to ensure that they were put in per plan and the grading to ensure that it was graded per the approved grading plan. So those are some enforcement mechanisms we have. I would, well, I, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. The other thing I would be caution, as far as making promises, you run into the question very quickly, who decides that it's worse or better and on what basis and what are the, what's the data? You know, these are standard policies in pretty much every city and watershed and they seem to be working. It follows a state's general stormwater permit. So there's no guarantees that someone won't be dissatisfied, but it is certainly a pretty thorough attempt to try to enforce that policy I talked about.
With that then, is it our turn to discuss?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So I'll open that up then to the commission for any questions, comments?
My only comment was on the abundance of sidewalks, I guess, but I don't know if the two sides on Park, James Parkway are, you know, they won't match up anything we currently have over there, but I can't remember talking about that in the past either, so. Was that something Parks brought up or?
No, it's not something that Parks brought up. It is a standard detail plate. So every type of road has a standard detail. And for a minor collector street, which James Parkway is considered a minor collector, sidewalks are required on both sides and that, of course, wasn't the case in 2000 or 2002 when the previous development was, went in with the city of, of New Market.
And then which block was the block that was thirty-seven feet longer?
It's the nor- it's the northerlymost block.
Okay.
And I can show it on the screen if you want. I actually will for the benefit of the public. I just need to share my screen. So you can, if I, you can see this block, if you can see where my mouse is. I'm going to do that so I can blow it up a little bit.
Street A?
Yeah. So along the northerly property line, which I believe abuts most of Tim's property, Riley Road will be extended to provide a connection to your property. We did look, the city engineer evaluated with the developers engineer the property to the north, which did have quite a bit of topography and didn't see a really good spot for street connection if you would want to develop in the future, so. We kind of just stuck with the Riley Road connection that would provide sanitary sewer to your property should you choose to develop at some point.
And that one will be difficult, so.
Yeah, I know. There's, there's no, there's no good connections on that side. That's not a steep drop-off or a wetland. It's the, basically everything there.
Yeah, the, even the backyards of the lots in this block will have very steep backyards.
Okay, that answered what I had, so.
Just looking at how the Street Cs and Street A, with regards to the Barsoness's concerns, I mean, I do think that we'd be doing incredibly disservice if we don't allow them to develop that because that is a major roadway that can get back there and I think.
Casey, can you speak a little louder? Sorry.
Close your microphone.
I was just wondering what streets, is it Street A or Street C that directly would run through, would that run through the Barsoness property? Both could be extended.
Both, Street C and A that you see here where my, I'm pointing my mouse. They both connect into the Barsoness property. So there would be opportunities for them to develop. They just don't know the proposed, the layout on that property at this point, so.
Would that change any of the developments in, let's just call them house numbers sixty-five, sixty-six, and fifty-eight? Like if that was, if those roads were to run through and we could give them time to get the affairs in order that they, you know, that maybe this could change the layout of this property too a little bit for the better.
I would think you'd lose two to four lots because there wouldn't be adequate width. If the right of way was split on the property line, there wouldn't be width for those southerly four lots.
Casey, could you repeat your question for me one more time so I can understand, make sure that I understand?
So.
Sounds like Rich did, but I want to make sure I do.
Because I'm assuming most of, I would say all of the Barsoness property is considered commercial, right?
No. This northeast corner of the Barsoness property is guided to medium-density residential. And some of, and then the remainder is guided to town center, which allows a mixture of multifamily housing and commercial. But this northerlymost section is guided to medium-density residential, which allows single-family detached homes or town home, attached housing, up to eight attached units.
Any other comments?
Then I'll, I'll go ahead and say a few things. So recently, Minnesota Housing Policy, they just issued a recent housing report and they have identified that Minnesota is missing a hundred and six thousand housing units today. So we, we have a housing shortage. I really like this proposal as that it does bridge the different lot sizes from the bigger lots to the smaller lots, identifying that there's a need for smaller homes in our community. And this also opens up, hopefully, starter homes, but I've also seen the costs of these newer constructions and honestly, I don't know how they could financially be considered starter homes, but that's another argument. I am very concerned as well regarding the street connectivity with the Barsoness property because with that said, we also need multifamily housing or, excuse me, single-family housing. That's the missing middle, which is oftentimes what townhomes are or even condos are. And we need that here as well. I guess with, with that, I mean, I guess I also have another question too with the developer. Is, is this going to be a phased build-out? Do you have it set up so it's possible to take some time and try to align part of it with the Barsoness property? Is that possible?
What was the question? Wondering about phased development.
Madam Chair, you're wondering about a phase development. We are here tonight to have you consider this preliminary plat as we've laid out. So there's kind of two different questions. Given the volume of new home permits and sales in Elko New Market, this will most likely be, I would say, a two or three-phased build-out, if you want to call it that. You know, that said, once you start, it's engineered very specifically to do that layout. Are there tweaks along the way? Undoubtedly. You know, it happens all the time as you get more familiar with existing conditions as you're digging. Is there something specific within the design that you're thinking, maybe there's some latitude or flexibility? Is it specific to the Barsoness corner?
Correct. It's the, the roads because I'm not a fan either of dead ends. But then my concern too is if you're going to develop right up to the property, but then those roads aren't usable or it's not desired or we have some wonkadoo creativeness. Excuse, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich.
I just, it sounds like we might be missing the point. Those are temporary cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, those are not permanent. They're just temporary.
So that, those roads could be extended. That's the intention.
So I'm, I'm going to display a couple of more maps. So I want to help you understand the connection to the Barsoness property and where these two roads come to their property line. This is, and I can, I can switch maps around if you give me a minute. But if you can see where my mouse is, this is Mr. Sullivan's property here. He's asked to re-guide the entire property to low-density residential. It's to meet a density requirement mandated on us by the Metropolitan Council. And this is Mr. Barsoness's property line. The north property line of Mr. Barsoness's property where it meets Mr. Sullivan's property. The two, and you can see that the blue is guided to town center, which really allows a large variety of uses, including commercial, multifamily. The yellow is medium-density residential. And those two roads stub in to Mr. Barsoness's property, or I should say the Barsoness property, in the yellow area. So they could continue those within their development. We're not precluding them from developing. So we looked at it as they're bringing a road to and through Mr. Sullivan's property, providing opportunities for the Barsoness property to develop in the future, however that may be. Now, do we know their preferred layout? No, we have not seen anything or talked to, to anybody. We do have an application before us that we have time restrictions based on state statute that we have to act upon the applications. For this particular application, you do, you would have the opportunity to, let me just double-check the. I think you could continue this request and still meet the guideline. We have to act on this application by the city council by July third. So you could, if there's a reason, another reason for you to delay action on this, you do have that opportunity. But if you don't have any further questions, we would ask that you make a recommendation to the city council.
Any other comments, questions from the, the commission?
How is the development that is?
Your microphone.
No, sorry. How is the development being developed over by, to the south side of like Firehouse? Is there any building going on right there right now?
We have two building permit applications, the development on the south side of County Road Two.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we have two building permit applications that have been submitted.
Okay, and then what is their lot size?
Sixty-five to seventy feet.
Okay, I just think sixty-five is an incredibly small lot size. This is my opinion, so, but I know we discussed this before and I think I was probably not in favor of that in the past, but I just think with what you're saying, with how expensive housing is now, I'd rather get more bank prime buck and have a bigger yard size if I was ever going to move away from my town.
Were these designed for a third or stall garage?
Yes.
A sec, a two-starter and a third added or building with three?
Likely three-car would be constructed right away, but go ahead.
So Madam Chair, to, there we go, sorry, some of your concerns. Tonight, we're hoping to get as much feedback and issues, questions addressed as possible. We fully expect it? No, that's too, too broad. I said, we were not, we're not surprised perhaps that things would get tabled or continued, if that's the phraseology. And we're not opposed to that. There's things here that maybe we could do to tweak the plan and maybe accommodate the Barsoness. We had a plan in place at one time. Again, circumstances changed. We can go back to that if that's a big concern of the commission. To Renee's point, somebody's got to go first. And so you present the layout and you present it in a functional way for your. And so you present the layout and you present it in a functional way for your development, but doesn't hamstring the guy next door. So that always happens. What I would suggest is perhaps respectfully, we table it and give us a little time to maybe work out some of these details, questions that you have, and see what we can come up with. Again, if there's issues or questions that we can address tonight and incorporate into any discussions or changes that I have with my neighbors, that would be very helpful. So I guess I would encourage all of you to let us know tonight what, you know, if it's acceptable except for these issues, great, we'll work on them. If there's other things, I'd prefer that we hear about them tonight, so we're not going back to the drawing board again. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your candor and your honesty. I am for the, the plan. I, I like the smaller lots. I like the opportunity for, for housing, more housing here in Elko. However, I am concerned about the connectivity with the neighbors', the neighbors' land. And if you are willing to pause a moment and work with the neighbor, I would encourage that. And then we would have to move forward next month and take action in order for it to be in front of the city council in time for a response.
That is correct.
I think we can give feedback if there's additional items that...
Yeah, if, yeah, let's make sure that you've went through all items of that, or any questions that anybody has, so we can continue.
Is that Mr. Winkler out there?
No, that's Tom Ryan.
Okay, yeah, okay. I was going to say that doesn't this allot a couple more lots on Whispering Creek 3rd? Or not?
Yes.
So that's what I would, or at least one or two.
Yes, it incorporates the residual lots in Whispering Creek 3rd addition into this development.
Yeah, but there's some to the south of the park too that could go.
Oh, I...
This considers those, but they are not part of the plat.
I know, okay. But they could be done by Mr. Winkler.
By Mr. Winkler.
Because I think that's a good idea to extend the road. I think we talked about that before, to get the road as far down as you can, because that, that'll be a nice road someday. On Riley Road.
Did staff want us to go through line by line of the requests?
No, I think the only, you know, feedback we were seeking, or the only questions that we had posed is, are you supportive of the point? In exchange for the deviations from city code, is the .36 acres sufficient trade-off for the planned unit development approval, in your opinion? So really, the, the two questions are, you know, they're real strong recommendations from staff for the, based on city code, or the extension of Riley Road to the south. And then if the .36 acres were not, in your opinion, sufficient trade-off, you could consider, you know, taking a couple of additional lots, which may make the public land dedication area more usable for the city in the future. But that was the only, those are the only questions we're really seeking feedback on.
I, I would be supportive of the outlot C plus lots 55, 56, and 57 to be dedicated to the city as part of parkland dedication in exchange for the CUP. Excuse me, yes. PUD. The request was lot 55, 56, and 57, south on, that's not Riley Road, it's A.
But you know, I can't read them on here, but if you can point to which ones they are. I think it's this is one, those three?
Those three, right there.
Oh, okay. I agree, yeah, okay. Yeah, I agree with that.
Joe, Casey, thoughts on that?
Because I was going to say, when you go to Barstens' property, that makes that next lot kind of impossible to fit with the city owning, well, or well, the city wanting the area to the north, so... With the road there, it'd be a weird looking lot. Am I allowed to approach it?
Go ahead. It's your application, sure.
So I can appreciate the horse trading that goes on with the PUD. Again, the reason we, if I back up a little bit, there was a time when the city was considering this size of a lot as a R zoning. The city has not made progress in that regard in the two and a half years, closely three years, that I've owned the property. And so rather than waiting and waiting, we decided that the best approach was the PUD. And it was a balance between the low-density R1 and the medium-density R3. We are trying to hit a achievable threshold for entry-level buyers. Each nick that you take out of this makes each of those lots more expensive, because the same infrastructure is required. So, yes, it's a PUD. Yes, there's give and take. But you're now reducing development by three lots. That puts the burden on the rest of the lots, and it all adds up. Anyway, thank you.
I would concur with everything Mr. Sullivan stated.
I know with the wetlands, they are losing buildable land, you know, so that's why they're going around them. So I can understand the issues with that as well, so.
That is an issue, yes. Any other thoughts regarding the, the, the development proposed as it is?
Have you met with the developer or the landowner to the east as well?
The landowner to the east is here tonight? Yeah, he did not choose to speak during the public hearing. He's contacted City Hall with questions regarding the road alignment for James Parkway, the potential for development of his property and the property, the Barstens' property to the west, so.
Well, I just wanted to know if...
Yeah, if, if you were interested in hearing from him, you'd need to reopen the public hearing.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other feedback, I guess we're going to table this then until next month.
Yes.
Make a recommendation to table from next month.
If you are wishing to take any more public comment at the next meeting, you would, you should make a motion to continue the public hearing. But if you're not, if you don't plan to make, take any more comment from the public, then if you think you've, people have had the opportunity to state their concerns for consideration by you and the developer, that we can keep the public hearing closed and just continue the item till the next meeting.
And as acting chair, I can't make the motion, correct?
You can.
Oh, I can.
I would say open it.
I, I would appreciate transparency and open, I would like to have as much public engagement as possible. So I would recommend that we would keep this open.
Okay. Okay.
Should I make a recommendation?
Make a motion, please, to continue the public hearing.
Continue it with the public comment open.
I will second that then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's passed.
Okay, so it will be continued to the next Planning Commission meeting, which would be the last Tuesday in May.
Thank you. Next up, we have another public hearing for R and F properties. Is there a presentation?
There is.
Thank you.
And I will be handling this presentation. Okay, tonight we are, the next item on the agenda is consideration of the application for comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments as proposed by RNF Properties LLC. On the aerial photograph here, you can see the properties in red. RNF Properties owns approximately 155 acres of land bound by County Road 91 on the west, France Avenue on the east, south, located south of County Road 2 and north of the Whispering Hills development and the Gulf Course. The property owner, Representative Tom Ryan, is with us tonight. And he has been in discussions with the city's Planning Commission and City Council regarding the long-term highest and best use of his property. Again, this property includes the Elko Speedway, the drive-in movie theater, and the Ryan contracting sites. The property owner has expressed interest in a potential multifamily and/or mixed-use development on his property located north of Marketplace Boulevard. And he has expressed an interest in potential long-term redevelopment of the Elko Speedway, drive-in theater, and Ryan contracting sites south of Marketplace Boulevard for residential development. The concept plan has been discussed by both the Planning Commission and the City Council on multiple occasions. Most recently, on February 27th, the Planning Commission provided feedback regarding future land use concepts for the property. And on March 14th, the City Council provided their feedback regarding future land use concepts presented by the property owner and gave, provided a pretty direct recommendation regarding what they would support. So this map just shows the overall city's comprehensive plan. For those here in attendance that might not be familiar with what a comprehensive plan is, I was just going to give a little background, that the city has adopted a comprehensive plan to guide the growth and development of the community through the year 2040. This is a requirement of both state statute and the Metropolitan Council. A comprehensive plan is a document that provide, that documents or describes a community's vision for itself into the future. And it is a compilation of the community's policy statements, goals, values, standards. It contains a whole bunch of maps that describe or guide future growth and development of the city. It is a communication device that we use for the public to convey our vision of what we want to be. And one component of the comprehensive plan is the land use plan. A land use plan is a graphic, graphically depicted here. And it shows in the yellow, different areas where the city would, has adapted residential growth. Blue and pink represent commercial growth areas. And more purple shades depict where we envision industrial growth in our community. So in the application that has been received was to amend the city's comprehensive plan by creating a new land use category that would be called mixed use, that would allow a mixing of commercial and/or residential development within one area. Also, a request to amend the city's comprehensive, request to amend the city's comprehensive plan by changing the guided land use on properties owned by RNF Properties and Thomas Ryan, specifically the southernmost area, to re-guide that from medium-density to low-density residential. The area where the Elko Speedway is, re-guide approximately 85 gross acres from commercial to low-density residential. Re-guide an area along France Avenue, approximately eight acres from commercial to medium-density residential. And then again, the request was to re-guide this area north of Marketplace Boulevard, approximately three and a half acres from commercial to mixed use, to allow that mixing of commercial and multifamily development. Also, a request to amend the city's zoning ordinance, to create a new zoning district. And finally, to re-zone the property north of Marketplace Boulevard. And that rezoning would allow more immediate development in that area. There's no current request to re-zone any of the property that is currently occupied by the Elko Speedway, the drive-in movie theater, Ryan contracting. Those uses would be permitted to exist for as long as the property owner chooses to. But at the same time, re-guiding this to residential would allow, at their discretion, the opportunity to apply to, to re-zone them for development. The map on the left shows the city's currently adopted land use plan, which the entire Speedway property is, and movie theater is guided commercial. The area north of Marketplace is commercial. There is, the current plan shows medium-density residential off of the east end of Whispering Hills Lane. That land use designation allows for development of townhouses and single-family homes currently. The request, again, the map on the right shows the request, which was described on the last slide. Most recent discussions held by the City Council on March 14th, the City Council expressed support, mostly consistent with the request by Mr. Ryan, however, with some caveats in the area north of Marketplace Boulevard. So the City Council supported low-density residential on the majority of the site, south of Marketplace. They supported the medium-density along France Avenue, which was inconsistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation at the last meeting. So I just wanted to make you, make sure that you knew that the City Council did support that mixed use along France Avenue. And then north of Marketplace Boulevard, they didn't want the ability, they wanted to restrict the developer's original, or Mr. Ryan's original request to have some full, full flex, flexibility to do multi, all multifamily. They were supportive of high-density on the southwestern portion of his property and a mixed use only allowing residential above the first floor. But they wanted to maintain that commercial component along France Avenue. These are just two site plans that had been previously submitted by Mr. Ryan that showed concepts. There is no approvals being sought for any particular development. We're only being asked to amend the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. But these are concepts that could be allowed with the new zoning. Again, you can see the multifamily building on that southwest portion of the, the site. Could, on the southeast portion of the site, it could be an entirely commercial building or a commercial building with residential above. And then maintaining a little property on the north for some single-use buildings, such as, you know, a single subway or whatever, a standalone building. Based on this final recommendation from the City Council, staff have prepared full revisions to Chapter 16. Based on this final recommendation from the City Council, staff have prepared full revisions to Chapter 6 of the lane, the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan by adding that new mixed-use zoning classification. Again, this mixed-use classification allows an option for residential above the main floor on commercial buildings and for projects containing a residential component, pushing a density of eight, eight-to-third units per net acre. And this comprehensive plan amendment also amends the land use map to re-guide Mr. Ryan's property, RNF Property accordingly. Examples of uses that you might see in this type of mixed-use district could be a multi-tenant building, as shown in this picture, could be a single-tenant building or a mixed-use building. And I described a picture of a building that had commercial on the main floor with two stories of apartments above. State statute requires that we provide upon, upon changes to our comprehensive plan, we provide notice to adjacent and affected jurisdictions. We've identified the Lakeville School District, New Market Township, Scott County Planning, Highway and Parks Department, the Vermillion Watershed District and the DNR as adjacent and affected jurisdictions. No comment, waiting for the review, or the school, the township, and Scott County. The Vermillion River Watershed District only had a very high-level comment and stated that they would recommend, upon redevelopment of the Alco Speedway property, that the city require investigation for potential soil contamination from cars' oils. And then, the Minnesota DNR has advised the city that we need to adopt a shoreland ordinance, and that probably should have been adopted. Anybody that has land within 1,000 feet of a DNR-protected water is required to have a shoreland ordinance. I'm not sure why we don't, but, so we'll get that going. In the zoning ordinance itself, a new zoning district is being proposed called B7. It's a mixed, it's a commercial, mixed-use district. It's an exact replica of the B5 General Business District, which applies to the property today with a few additions that would relate to the allowance of residential uses. Again, residential dwellings, which don't occupy the ground floor space of a building, has been added as a allowable use. And then other residential-related uses, such as home occupations, in-home daycares, things that would naturally be allowed, keeping of animals if a residence were allowed. Staff has, went through the entire zoning ordinance to see where other items may need to be addressed and are recommending amendments to Chapters 5, 7, 12, 24, and 26. Specifically, Chapter 5, Building and Site Design Requirements. This is where the part of our code that applies building stand, design standards. Then there are landscaping requirements, signage requirements. So specifically pertaining to Chapter 5, Building and Site Design Requirements. So for the proposed B7 zoning district, staff has suggested the design standards that would be associated with multifamily zoning, and that is, basically precludes the use of vinyl siding, wood siding, or Class 4 building materials, and requires 25% of the exterior of a building facade be brick, stone, rock face black, or glass. So that's a 25%, 25%. So that is what is being proposed. Landscaping requirements. We've taken the exact landscaping requirements that apply to the property today, which is the commercial landscaping requirements, and propose those requirements for this new district. Signs, same thing, proposing exactly what it would be permitted on the site today is what is being proposed for the new zoning district. And that's basically it. I do have a couple of questions for the commission. And these are the questions. We can, I'll finish my presentation, maybe we can come back to these. But specific to open space, so in that building and site design, that's where we address the requirement for open space. Does the Planning Commission want to include a requirement for open space for project residents? In our multifamily district, there's a 10% requirement for usable open space. 10% of the project area. The R5 district, our downtown multifamily district, has no such requirement. So like, the downtown New Market, where you're mixed in with more of a commercial area, does not have that requirement. So I'd be looking for feedback on that. Building height, currently the property has a maximum building height of 35 feet. That applies to our commercial districts. That is the same height in our multifamily district. However, in our downtown New Market, the 40, we would have a 45-foot max building height. So I'm looking for feedback on maximum building height for that mixed-use zoning district. And then whether you think the residential above the main floor should be a permitted use, which is by right, or a conditional use, meaning they would have to get a conditional use permit for the mixing of commercial and residential in one building. And it's a bit over the board when I look at the districts that allow for multifamily. Our apartments above the R4 district, which is where the apartments are being built today by, that's R4, that's our multifamily, high-density district. Apartments are a permitted use. In the R5, they're a permitted use. However, in the R5, if they're mixing commercial and commercial and residential in one building, then it triggers a conditional use. So I'm going to kind of leave it at that. Again, the applicant had initially requested to rezone the entire site to allow for either, for all mixed use. And following discussions with the City Council, we were directed to rezone the southwest portion of the property to R4, high-density residential. Southeast portion of the property to mixed use. And this rezoning would ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan as required, should that amendment be approved. The Planning Commission is being asked to hold a public hearing on this, on these applications and provide recommendations to the City Council regarding the following, following items. Amend the comprehensive plan. Amend the zoning ordinance to create a new district and rezone the properties north of Marketplace Boulevard. And this map graphically depicts what the proposal is. As in, as with the last public hearing, we would ask that comments be taken first from in-person participants, second from Zoom participants. If anybody wishing to address the commission, approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. When in-person comments are finished, then we will look to Zoom to see if anybody would like to raise their hand.
Thank you very much, Renee. I am going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at 8:40 PM.
Hi, I'm Tom Ryan. Most of you know me. I'm the applicant. And you've, it's basically the same thing that's come before you at least three times, maybe four. This is the fourth? At least three. We started last year on this. Anyways, so just address a couple of things. Some for clarity, if there's public comment, I think I maybe could clarify a couple of things. And then I want to first start off by saying, there's two real issue here. It's rezoning the Speedway property from commercial to residential use. Now, before we go any further with that, the Speedway, as it exists now, and has existed for more than 60 years, is viable. I intend to operate it that way until it becomes not viable. I don't see it being unviable or not a good business for coming years. I, I just don't see it. But as everybody probably has been to the property or has seen the property, you know, it's, if there wasn't a Speedway there, it just isn't suitable for commercial use. Well, it could be suitable for commercial use, but it's, the land is rolling, it's got wetland features, it's got mature trees. It just seems like, also the place that it has within the city, as far as the, the wetland and the lakes around it, it just seems to be more suited for residential use than it would be commercial use. So that's, that's, that's one purpose here, is to get the right end zoning on the property. I think that's one purpose of what we're doing here. But again, the Speedway, I always intend to run it as a Speedway. There's a history there, so on and so forth. I think it's, it's good not just for the community, I think it's also for the region. So as long as the racing business is viable, we'll continue to run it that way. After the Speedway's gone, I think the use, what we're proposing to the city is the best use for the property is some kind of residential. And to follow that up, I was fine with the Planning Commission's recommendation last time of making it all a single-family. I was fine with that. And I also told the City Council that. I don't have a preference for whether it's single-family or whether it's townhomes. And of course, we're talking about a portion of it. So whatever you come up with, I'm good with. I think, hopefully, it'll be a long time before we ever get to that point, and maybe there's an adjustment to what the market wants and what the city needs at that time. So that was the one thing. Okay, so now shifting gears, the other issue we're talking about is four and a half acres that's not near the Speedway, that's across the street from the Quick Trip. It's, it's south of the post office and south of the Quick Trip, and it's bordered by the Kerbin Gatherer. It's about four and a half acres by Marketplace Boulevard. So, and I've been trying to sell that four and a half acres for more than 15 years and tried to do everything. We've recently, within the last year, put up more signs. But really, and then in fact, last year, I did a market study on what this area could use, what this community could use, and came back with, you know, affordable housing. And the affordable housing component would fit really well into this four and a half acres in the form of like an apartment building. And I think staff and, and the City Council, and you people, and, and the Planning Commission were supportive of that. But the one thing you didn't want to miss was the component of the commercial retail space. So what we agreed to do, what I agreed to do, based on recommendation from City Council, was to make the lower level of the second building all commercial retail. So that was a good compromise. And I think, I think we can swing that as far as, when I say we can swing it, we'll have enough tenants that, when that time comes, that we could rent those spaces out. I had my doubts at one point, but maybe three years from now or so, that need will be there. So that being said, it's, it's, you know, and as far as timing goes, I would like to build that first apartment building. I'd like to move forward with that yet this fall. So that being said, I just had one more small comment. And that was, I think, to change your, your historic rules or guidelines that you have for your historic apartments that you're already building successfully in the city, to change those from height requirements and green space requirements. I think that would only hamper and drive up the costs of anything we'd try to build inside this area. So we hope those stay consistent with what they are now. We can make it work now, but some of those things, especially, you know, a, a two-level building versus a three-level building, or maybe you'd end up with a one-level building above a retail space. Those, those numbers don't work, so. Anyway, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Alright. I'm going to ask one more, or two more times. Are there any other comments? Anybody that would like to speak during this public hearing?
Does anybody have their hand raised on Zoom?
No, they don't.
And then one more time, any other comments for the public hearing? Hearing none. I close the hearing at 8:47. And then Renee, if you could put up those questions, please.
Okay, so here are the questions. Does the Planning Commission want to include a requirement for open space for project residents within this newly-created B7 zoning district? And we kind of see it both ways in depending on the two different high-density districts that we have.
So what was the apartment over here, R4?
Yes, the site where the apartment is under construction is R4. It's a high-density residential zoning district. And in that 10%, it can be simply green space. It can be a workout room within the building. The R5 district, which would allow multifamily in downtown New Market, like a full multifamily building downtown, does not have that requirement.
I guess this is a question for Tom. Where was your parking going to be? Was it under the building or, or around it, or I didn't recall that?
One space has to be enclosed, one space per unit.
Okay.
So.
Kind of a mix.
There's some different, different ways you can do it.
Yeah.
But it is clear you have to have one enclosed space.
One enclosed space per unit.
Yeah, okay. And that's for R4 or any of them?
That applies to all of the districts. All of the multifamily districts. The R4 and the R5.
I would be supportive of no 10% usable space requirement. I would also be supportive of going up to the max height of 45 feet for the buildings. And then also, I think that housing, housing should be permitted, and it shouldn't be a conditional use permit. I believe that housing should, above, the apartments above floor commercial be a permitted use.
Yes. I agree.
I agree.
So there was a consensus on all three of those items, as stated by Melissa?
I want, I would.
What'd you want?
What's the, what's the height of the apartment over here?
It's a little over 45.
It's about 40. No, they had a maximum height of 35 feet, I think. Yeah, it's just barely over the 35 feet.
And we have the fire equipment. That was back in the day.
Yeah.
Didn't have the fire equipment for above a certain height. Now we do, so. And with flat-roofed buildings or whatever, you can do different stuff. But yeah, I agree with those three comments.
Just confirming that, Casey. Just confirming that Casey was.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I just wanted to, I think there was one comment that Tom asked. That was maybe, did you, if I understood you correctly, have a request regarding exterior building materials? We proposed that, or maybe I misinterpreted that.
Oh, I didn't.
Okay.
I don't think he mentioned that, so.
Okay. Misunderstood.
Well, thank you. Then I will go ahead and make the motion then regarding the ten percent. Here are my questions.
Backup one.
Oops, sorry.
Let you go with the B five, right? Or whatever it was.
Yes, okay, yep. So regarding open space, we will be going with either with a B five or R five, excuse me. No usable space requirement. And then building height, R five, again forty-five feet. And then we would, we would go with the permitted use apartments, correct, R four?
Okay. And then, so those are, will be incorporated into the final documents presented to the city council. And we need motions regarding the following items as shown on the screen. Request to amend the comprehensive plan, amend the zoning ordinance, and rezone the property north of Marketplace Boulevard.
So we're just doing the one property, okay, not the whole?
Okay, yep.
We're regiding the entire property to future land uses. We're only rezoning the Marketplace Boulevard area, uh, north, northern area. The area south will continue to be zoned P U D to allow the track, the Speedway, and the construction company.
So I'm assuming the townhomes that were discussed at the city council meeting are not up for debate. That could be whatever, just, just so I understand, that could be whatever.
It can still move again in the future. You know, you can guide it one way if the things, the market changes is what Tom was saying.
Are you, are you referencing this area? Yeah, so the planning commission can continue to make whatever recommendation they want regarding that area. This is just the.
We talked about a buffer between the commercial or apartments to residential. And the council disagreed with our comment on it. They went a different way than what we thought. And they're saying that's up for negotiation or discussions at a later date if that ever becomes true. Is what you're saying.
Think I'll, oh.
That's how I would say it.
Well, but be clear that what is shown on this map would be in place today if you recommended approval. Again, the speed, Tom may continue his operations for, you know, decade or decades. He could choose to amend this again if he chooses, if he changes. It was a high-level concept.
Still is, yes.
Does that answer your question or?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make the motion then for those three items as well.
Okay.
As recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes. Next, moving forward, we have our third public hearing, which is.
Thank you.
Consider amendment to chapter nine of subdivision ordinance regarding utilities and driveway aprons.
Brendan is gonna handle this request. We haven't, it's a pretty easy amendment, so we don't have any PowerPoint or anything, but.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much what you see on the memorandum is what's described. Things that are struck through will be removed and things that are underlined will be added. All of this was looked over by the city engineer and approved. I'll take any questions, but that's really all.
Was this development we looked at tonight? Ventures or August or, what's the name of August Ventures? Okay, was that one based off of this ordinance? And then now we're looking at doing something different or what?
No, really, we're just cleaning up some language. For example, we had language in there that said it shall be ductile iron pipe for water mains. But in practice, we don't do that. So we're really just cleaning up the language to more accurately reflect what we actually do. But it is not dependent or will affect the previous development proposed tonight.
All right. So what do you need from us on that?
We do need a public hearing.
All right, so I will open the public hearing at eight fifty-seven. Is there anybody present that would like to comment?
Come on, Tim, come on, you can do it. You can do it.
Second request, any comments, thirds? And nobody online? Okay, so we will close it at eight fifty-eight. The public hearing is closed. Any discussion, questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brad?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, that has passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, general business, old police department building committee appointment?
I'm sorry, just real quick, who did the motion and second on that last one?
Brad did the motion. Joe second.
Thank you. All right, this one will be quick, quicker than the last one for sure. Is it working now? Nope, still not working. That's fine. Old PD committee appointment, if it, I just wanted to change slides at least. So here's the property, old PD, formerly the police station, city hall in Elko. It's right next to the Elko Express ballpark. For those of you who aren't familiar, currently it's being used by the food shelf. And part of the property is also being used by the Elko Express. It's one-story structure, approximately thirty-five hundred feet. It was actually a school building and a post office long ago. The original structure is likely built around nineteen hundred, but it's suspected that the addition was built in the nineteen seventies or eighties. In the early part of the last decade, city council has a phased remodeling plan for the building. The work was planned to be phased out over a few years. Right now, we are all the way into phase four. Interior improvements basically to meet city code, OSHA and ADA standards. So a lot of, a fair amount of work has been done to the building to get it to this point. All phases were intended to be completed within a few years. However, in twenty nineteen, it was determined that it was better alternative to relocate the police department to the city hall, so it was kind of put on hold for a while. The city council has not made a final decision regarding the future use of the structure, but they do want to repurpose it, the building, some form of community space in some form or another. So at the April third, twenty twenty-four city council meeting, the city council discussed the topic and advised staff on how to proceed. They directed staff to initiate a search committee to handle discussions related to the property. That search committee would be made up of one to two city council members, one planning commission representative, which is why we're here tonight, and one parks commission representative. Also, we're gonna bring in Hope for the Community Food Shelf, a member from the Elko Express, one to two representatives from local organizations like the Boy Scouts or the Lions, who may be likely to use the space, and then one to three additional at-large citizens. Staff will facilitate the meetings and provide technical input as well. So if there's any questions or discussion, we would like a volunteer, whoever may be interested in serving on that steering committee.
Not I.
So no meetings are scheduled yet. We're thinking probably June or July would be the first kickoff meeting, kind of just a tour of the whole place and most likely meet about once a month. So if there's a volunteer, otherwise we can nominate whoever's not here tonight maybe.
I would love to volunteer, actually.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants to be, okay, thank you.
Is there a motion appointing?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Brad. Oh, thank you. So then we've appointed Melissa Hanson.
Thank you.
On this committee. You're welcome.
Do we have to vote?
Do we? Do you guys want to vote?
Aye.
Vote passes.
All right, then moving on, miscellaneous, community development updates.
The, I have, I think just two updates. We did receive an, a concept plan that will be scheduled on the next planning commission meeting agenda. For those who, you who may have been around, Brad only probably, Pheasant Hills was a development that had been proposed in the southwest portion of the community pre-recession in the early two thousands and made property, started grading at the time. And then when the recession hit, the project was abandoned. There is a developer that has submitted a concept plan and would like the plan to be reviewed before the planning commission city council.
Did it change much or?
Not a whole lot. It, for the most part, follows the original plan.
The original plan just had more property.
Yeah, it was, they had only, the developer at the time had only taken down like a phase one or two of the development. The remainder of the property still remains in the Socorro family. And I think that they have, what we have been told is they are not interested in selling the remainder of the property anymore. So this is just, again, we'll kind of stub roads into their property so they can pick off in the future. Between now and then, I do want to meet with township representatives so we can get township input on, on this particular one.
Because right now it looks like a motorcycle path in there.
Really?
The old road, roadway that they started.
And then today they started, or Niagara Bottling is starting to mobilize on the Niagara site. At this point, they're proceeding with grading at their own risk. The city, city still does not have the water appropriations permit that has been applied for. We are told that we can expect a decision by approximately the beginning of June, possibly late May. But until that time.
Now had a timeline on that, did they not?
It's kind of a self-imposed timeline. State statute does say something, but they decide when they think the application is complete, so. So you'll, if you haven't already, you may start to see some grading equipment mobilizing on the site.
And they also started to grade our roads, to, or grind our roads.
They're gonna start paving tomorrow. There's a good chance they could be done with that whole thing by the end of next week.
So how many days is the paving?
Count, it's like six, seven?
Yeah, okay.
If it goes that fast, of course.
The whole city?
The whole job.
The whole job. Right, I mean, yeah.
They were quick today to grind. I mean, they got a lot done, so.
Yeah, all the prep work is pretty much done now. They're milling, they'll start paving tomorrow. About fifteen hundred tons a day. I don't remember the total tonnage, but it's gonna go pretty rapidly.
So are they, they put a sticky layer and then they, so I have people that come down to our house, you know, to work and I told her not to come if it's sticky roads. I didn't want her getting it all over her truck, so.
Sure. They all usually put some signs on the road the day before. They're gonna do the milling or the paving so that people can be advised.
There's no parking signs already out, yeah, so. But I just didn't know if they were gonna start way in the back and work their way out or.
I think they're gonna start up in your neighborhood. And just keep going.
Did you want to update on the downtown reconstruction or nothing?
It's actually going pretty well. We, we didn't need the rain tonight for the project, but overall, it's, you know, it's part of living and where we do, so. But we're finding a lot of abandoned stuff.
Such as?
Storm sewer pipes and culverts and drain tiles. So we're taking out what's in our trench, but the soils aren't very good there. So we're not excavating to chase stuff to take it out because we don't want to dig any more than necessary. So where we cross an old pipe that's probably abandoned, we're still just gonna put in some sort of a connection just so there's continuity. So that if it is taking water, the water can keep flowing. But we're not, yeah, we'd be spending a lot of money trying to remove all that stuff and then having to deal with trying to stabilize the roads. Because once you stir it up, it's just that much more difficult to build a new road on top, so. But they're making progress. They've got one, two, three, four, five blocks out of eight. The utilities are pretty much done, so.
That's over here, isn't it?
Yep, south of the double wide.
Harry, do you have any updates from the township?
No, nothing much on it right now. It's been pretty quiet. You guys were talking about tonight, nothing really affects us.
Next meeting, we'll go over our chair and vice chair nominations. And we're supposed to do that in April, but it worked out because Nicole wasn't here tonight, so we'll do that next month.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Anybody opposed?
You okay with us adjourned, Ken?
Yeah.
Adjourned.
I think it's, I think you've done all the things.